Follow him.
Follow, yes.
Grace Memorial Baptist Church, you can please give us your prayer.
All right. First of all, I just want to say thank you for allowing me the privilege to come and to pray and ask God to bestow wisdom on you. And I want to say thank you to each person that is here for all the service that you do for our county. And I know that as you impact our county, it really changes our world. And so, thank y'all so much. If there's anything that I can ever do, or we as Grace Memorial can ever do, we're here to offer assistance, know that we're praying for y'all, okay? Let me pray and lead us and ask God for wisdom today. Oh Lord, God of heaven and earth, Father of those who have trusted in your Son, Jesus Christ, thank you. Thank you for you being the God who listens, the God who actually at the moment right now that we can come to, who will provide exactly what is needed. And I know, Lord, that these men and women that are gathered in this room today, they need wisdom from you. They need wisdom for you to help them make the decisions that would better the people here in Harrison County. And also, Lord, that would change them so they could, Lord, impact the world and change the world, that that would be a better place and a place, Lord, that you could thrive, that you could do good in. And so, Lord, I pray for each board member, Lord, that you would give them what is needed at this time, an ear that would be able to be attentive to those that are asking for things, that are wanting to do good in the county. I pray, Lord, that not only would they have an ear that would be able to listen, but you would fill their mind with wisdom, Lord, to make the decision that is necessary, that would be the best for the good for your people. And so, Lord, I know that you can do that, you can move in that way. And even as I leave this place this morning, Lord, and you actually grant those things that I'm asking, I don't want to pray specifically, for these men and women as they serve in this way, each person that's present, each person that's serving on the board, I pray God that you would protect their families, protect them, draw them close to you, so they are able to continue to be effective in this community, so good things and great things can be made much of here in Harrison County. So, Lord, may you bless them and draw them into you. Or thank you for what you're going to do here in this place today, trust that you would grant wisdom. Love you, and I ask this now in Jesus's name.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, Mr. John McHale, your lead is in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, welcome. First up, I have number one, we have a order supporting this submission of memorandum of understanding by the Center for Nonviolence through the Justice Court for Harrison County to be a collaborative partner in the Justice for Families Grant at no cost to the county.
Mr. President, I'd like to move that we change this to order to consider the submissions. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, so we'll make that order to consider. Now, we have any discussions on that order?
I just ask your attorney to address the concerns that he might have legally to the board before we take the action.
Do you want to? Yeah, we'll let, yes, if you want to come on up and state your name and address for the county.
Hi, and thank you so much for putting this on the agenda. What we're doing here as an organization.
Just give us your name.
Stacy Riley, CEO of Guffport Center for Nonviolence.
Good, yes ma'am.
Okay, we are working on submitting a grant application for the Department of Justice for a grant that's called Justice for Families. And it is a collaborative application that we'll be submitting to them, including Long Beach, hopefully Harrison County, Biloxi, DeArbyville, and Long Beach, anyway. So, what this collaborative would be is a working partnership with organizations as the Victim Service Agency, as well as our city and county partners, to be able to provide services to victims of domestic violence sooner rather than later. And what this project will do is we'll add positions to the agency that we would supervise, we would be the collaborat-- we'll be the fiscal agent for the entire collaboration for this project. And it would be to hire a domestic violence coordinator, and the coordinator would work in Justice Court in Long Beach, in Biloxi, in DeArbyville. They would come in and have access to police reports from calls, from domestic violence calls from previous days. They would make contact with the victim in those situations to offer them services, because how it happens right now is whenever a victim of domestic violence makes a phone call to Long Beach, when they come out, and it could be one, two, three months from then, then they go to court. So, this will bring them into--
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, wait just a minute. I'm so sorry. I apologize to everyone.
Share. Always said no phones.
The sign used to be up there, but it's gone. Anyway, no, he's still confiscating my phone, I'm sorry.
So, what this DV coordinator would do is work with those places. We're asking for the cities and counties to do is first of all, give us a place for that person to sit and make phone calls, not a permanent office space, somewhere they can do to make phone calls to victims. We're also partnering with two other agencies within our county area, Program Believe and Boat People SOS. Those individuals do the exact same services that we're providing with making phone calls to victims, but they'll make phone calls and reach out to non-English speaking individuals, Spanish and Vietnamese victims in those situations. We have worked with the cities, we have the Justice Court judges aware of this and signing off on it, giving a letter of commitment. We have the Chancery Court judges giving a letter of commitment, because part of this project is also to provide supervised visitation facilities and safe exchange whenever there's domestic violence involved in the custody agreement. So, I know there's some questions about the MOU. With everything with federal grants, they require a partner, so they rarely give out grants to just one agency to do one thing solely, they want to seek these collaborations. And so, what we're doing is actually able to assist with law enforcement and with courts with getting domestic violence victims to come to court, getting domestic violence victims to get access to services, and also to reduce the number of times that law enforcement point out to the same houses over and over again. We can bring them into services sooner rather than later, then that would help with the services we're providing. And this also gives legs to the project that we have been proposing to you guys for a little while called the Family Justice Center. This will be staff members that will be attached to that. Also included in this collaboration would be an employee that we would hire that would be a former law enforcement, that would work with our law enforcement partners in this collaboration with providing training on legality assessments, on assisting with, you know, going out and investigating domestic violence calls, whatever the law enforcement partners are asking for us, this person would be there for them to be able to bridge the gap between victim services and law enforcement.
Mr. President, so this says at no cost to the county, but there actually would be a cost to the county if you're saying you want the county to provide a place. Doesn't the county already provide you with office space?
Yes.
And a shelter, et cetera, et cetera? Are any of the cities currently providing you with anything?
With this project, every--
No, overall?
Right now, no office space they're providing us. But with this partnership, they've all agreed to let this person come in and have a seat to make the phone calls. Again, we're not asking for an office space--
The cities have actually adopted this, because I've talked to three, and the three I've talked to have not signed off on this.
Long Beach has signed off on it, DeArbyville's signed off on it, and we're going in front of the Biloxi City Council meeting tomorrow.
What about Pastor Stan, I know he works as well.
We haven't approached them with this yet. The grant is due Thursday to be sent in. I mean, and we've been working on this project since it came out in January. So, it's due Thursday, and if funded, the grant would take place on October 1st. It'll be a three-year grant, and if we need to, if we at that point in time have the ability to bring on other partners in Harrison County, we would bring on Pastor Stan as well, because just time ran out for us to be able to capture all the jurisdictions.
Mr. President, I think what you do is so admirable, though we do have some questions, and I'd like to ask our attorney to address those. Okay?
I know this is on short term, and I do apologize for the lateness of doing this. Generally, we get agreements from all different sources, all every day until the board tells me they're going to go forward with it. I generally don't spend a lot of time, otherwise my bill would be double what it is. So, until one of the board members raised questions last week, I did not go through the details of it. My understanding is, as I relate to the board, this was at no cost to the county. Having reviewed the agreement, the part of the MOU, there are some serious legal issues in it, the most important of which is that it creates a partnership. Generally, under a partnership, the partners are liable for the acts of their partners. So, you've got multiple agencies, not even agencies, just groups up here, that if they did something wrong, this board could be liable for it, the county could be liable for it, and it would take us outside of the Torque Claim Act, which would limit liability potentially, because they're not subject to the Torque Claim Act, and we're liable for their actions. So, that's the first most major issue in the way it's set up. If the county's going to do something, I have no problem with the county doing it and fully supporting it, but it's going to have to be a separate agreement with the county. That's the first issue, is we're not, we can't create a partnership, whether the federal government likes the term partnership or not. You know, they're not laws. Why I asked earlier, do y'all have a lawyer, because a lawyer understands this better? But somebody in Washington thinks that the word partnership is a nice, nice little sounding thing, but legally, it means serious issues for the partners. That's the first issue. The second issue is throughout the agreement, this board, you're asking the board to make commitments on behalf of other elected officials that the board does not have authority to do. The sheriff, for instance, mentioned, calling law enforcement, he's the law enforcement of the county, this board cannot commit him to do what y'all have asked him to do. He's an elected official, has his own asset. Same thing with the Chancery Court, the Chancery Clerk's office, they are elected officials. They decide what they can do within their budget, the board does have authority over their budgets, well, not the Chancery Court, to provide funding to them, they're under the AOC, their office, no straight to court, it's where it comes. And they, you know, there's multiple issues with your agreement. I don't know if we can solve those by Thursday, the problem. I think if the board wanted to give a commitment to provide office space, they could do that. If it's beyond that, we do have the board, the Justice Court Clerk is an employee of the county, so the board has authority over the Justice Court Clerk. We don't have authority over the Justice Court Judges, they are elected Chancery Court Judges. Well, I sent it to the Chancery Court Judges, and they all supported it, all sent back and supported it. There are serious issues with that agreement as far as liability concerns are. I couldn't recommend it to this board as it sits now. And the problem I have with it is, if y'all have an attorney, we could communicate, come up with something to address it, for me to address it. I represent the board, not your organization, so I can't draft an agreement for y'all, it's not enforced the way it works. We happy to do whatever we can, but the board first has to tell me what they desire to do. There is a commitment, primarily the only commitment, well, the way it's structured now, there's many commitments that the county, this board doesn't have authority to make. The one commitment it does have authority is over the county offices, to provide them office space. There is, I will say this to the board, you know, I do criminal defense, including domestic violence. There is a need for coordination countywide on these domestic violence cases, because what happens in Biloxi doesn't always get communicated to Long Beach. These cases have a life of their own in different locations, and so there's a miscommunication sometimes between entities on these domestic violence cases, which by the very nature of it, this is an ongoing problem that grows as I see it. And so, without communication between these various agencies, sometimes it's difficult to stop something that ends in a tragedy. But, so it's a worthwhile effort, it just, I don't think this board has authority beyond providing you office space if they deserve to do that.
Do y'all not have space at your current office for this person?
Yeah, we'll have an office space for them. This means like the office space they'll be using, it could be a desk in the court building to be able to make phone calls. And it will only be there occupied in that place for a couple hours a week, or a couple hours, a couple times a week, so it's not like a permanent space, like what we have with our legal clinic now.
The courts do this now, both Biloxi and Guffport provide, but I know this from experience, not personally experienced, but as a lawyer. They provide a room where when you have a case and there's a domestic violence victim, and they will go to a room and discuss it with them, to make sure they're not being influenced by the spouse or something, but, so they do provide space now, and have for as long as I can remember. They call them domestic violence coordinators, I don't know who they're employed by, but it's the city or y'all, but they do provide that now.
Don't we have one upstairs?
Yep.
Justice Court, yeah, we, now, the Chancery Court's different, I'm not sure what they have up there, that's the place I stay as far away from as I can, Mr. McCann, I was going to answer that, but--
The question is what?
Whether or not they have space for the domestic violence coordinators at Chancery. But you have conference rooms and things up there that they can use for your kids.
There are little conference rooms, I've sat in there before with children during custody cases.
Yeah, the children's room, but I wouldn't think you'd want to use that.
No, there's two or three that you can go in. I guess my question is, do you have an attorney, so Tim can maybe try to work with them over the two or three concerns that we might have?
If I might address that issue, my name's Heather Wagner. I am an attorney, I'm not the center's attorney, but I am the attorney that's working with them on this grant application, and I would love to sit down and work out any details that might make the, Mr. Holland, more comfortable with this and make it a more palatable and, yeah, acceptable project.
It's a highlighted portion of the, unfortunately, it's just about everything except for the office space that's an issue.
That's the, I'm prepared to make a motion to provide office space if we can find it, but other than that, I kind of agree with you, I don't know how we can commit other elected officials to--
Well, that's a big problem, and the potential liability for being partners with multiple groups that we don't, not, ultimately, what happens, I'm not saying that's absolute, but I can tell you right now, if something happens with, I don't remember all the names of the groups that we don't even know, and something happens with them, and somebody says, I'm filing suit, county's going to be named, and we'll be liable for them because we're a partner. That's generally the law, which I sent to you, and this is, you know, and I don't think y'all are using the term partnership in that term.
Correct.
But that's what it is, that's what it says, and so you, but what I'm looking at is the county going to get drawn into some litigation for some group that we don't even know, and they're going to say, well, you signed a partnership agreement, and if you have partnership, you're liable for the acts of your partners. That's a dangerous thing.
I would have a reason to be in MOU under their, under their name, to be in the MOU from us?
Yeah, we might be able to do a, well, the sheriff's going to have to commit to what people do or not do, that's for the sheriff and the sheriff department. Same thing with the Chancery Court, Chancery Clerk, and the chancellors upstairs, and the Justice Court Judges. We cannot make them do any of that, that's not going to be something we can do with them.
Mr. President, could you, could you call and ask them to give you an extension on the Thursday deadline?
They do that all the time.
Not a federal grant, I wish, but we have opportunities. So, with this grant application, you know, we've had it two months to get this thing together, and of course, there's a lot of, you know, moving parts with the whole thing, and they give you the option of doing a MOU as well as a letter of commitment. Now, if it's not, if we're not to the point where we can do the MOU right now, we have received a letter of commitment from the Justice Court to say that, you know, they would participate in this project. That way, it gives us some time to work out some of the other parts, whenever, you know, hopefully we get funded for this grant project in October, and we can look at between now and then, a way that we can more formalize in the MOU where it has factors with that, within that, that everyone agrees on.
Just so the board's clear, it's not just office space. The MOU also commits that the Justice Court Clerk and his employees will provide them assistance and information and things of that nature, and the board does have authority over that. It also requires the Chancery Court, Chancery Clerk--
Glad to.
We don't have that authority, but he does, I mean, the Chancery Clerk does, and the judges do. Same thing with the sheriff, he can commit to provide certain information. I'm not sure that he's even seen the contents of the agreement.
We're, I'd go ahead and tell the board that we're going to partner with them as much as we can, as best we can, but it's going to have to be the legal way, whether it's going to be MOU or how we're going to do it, but, yeah, we're planning on partnering with--
Obviously, if the sheriff isn't agreeing with, that's one aspect, and the same thing, are you asking for office spaces within the courtroom, or are you asking wherever it would be available?
Wherever be available. Thing is, is we don't want to take any court paperwork out of the court, so any place inside the court that our advocate can sit down and review their case files and make phone calls to victims.
So, you would have a problem taking somebody from the Justice Court, or move to the courthouse, to an office, it just would be a problem, because they're right in the middle. Usually, this is, in my experience, this is occurring when the case is being either tried or disposed of, most of this communication with the victim, the defendant, and everybody else is occurring right then and there. It may take a little while, but it's not like you can walk over six blocks away to an office.
But this is not when they come to court. This is, this is after the arrest is made and before they come to court, so we're talking two, three months before.
So, you would need it in the courtroom. Mr. President, Pam, isn't Justice Court, second floor, there's offices available on the second floor?
That's what I'm just asking.
There's not a lot of space available, because, you know, that's where they've been keeping the storage, the files that they've been trying to--
We can handle that.
--store, but there is some, some on that, on the south side, there's some, some--
We can handle the files.
Enough for one person, I mean, yes.
Transfer the files under records management or--
They've been working on that.
To help with their grant, if the deadline is Thursday, the board possibly could do a resolution or an order committing to provide office space if available.
I'll make that motion.
Then you could get an order today or this week, says the board's committed to that.
Supervisor Rockaway has something, want to chime in?
When the Justice Court commits to something, does that hold us liable in any way, or is that just their commitment?
Well, that's not an easy answer. Usually, the Justice Court, no, the general answer is no, the Justice Court Judges are immune under the Torque Claim Act, and so their actions, they're immune, and they're not liable for their actions, no.
And if I might, with the Justice Court Judge, the letter of commitment, and you've seen that letter of commitment?
Right, I've seen that.
And it is basically just to allow the center's programs to come into the court and to participate in the programs. It's, that is, in essence, what the letter of commitment, the--
They have judicial immunity, so generally not.
It seems that right now, with mental health and a lot of other issues, we are responsible for a lot of things that we don't know what other people are doing. And it's becoming, you know, if we take on more and more, the more we take on, do you understand what I'm talking about?
I don't think we have an issue with the--
We don't have an issue at all with the commitment.
The bottom line, what Tim's saying is, ain't the actions that we are responsible for, we come under the Torque Claim Act, which gives us some protection, it's the other groups--
Now, we're stepping outside of it.
It's the other people that are involved in this MOU that we're concerned about, that we wouldn't have those protections. So, we support their effort--
Yes.
--to come up with some way to protect us.
We'll step outside of our protection. And I understand, I mean, we have liability attached to our, our staff and our facilities as well. And like I say, what you do is totally, is so admirable, and we appreciate you so much, you're such an asset to this community. We just want to make sure that we can work with you within our boundaries.
But we do have a motion in a second for providing office space--
Call for the question.
I'm thinking that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, if that motion carries.
That's fine, but I think that concern you is the deadline on the grant.
Yeah, right.
Can we do a resolution in support of that grant without approving that MOU and that you work up something that in effect would meet our concerns?
I think the board could do a resolution supporting their application for a grant without entering into a partnership, because that's the concern, is the language of using a partnership. And I'm sure that whoever drafted the MOU was using flowery language to make it all look like a nice thing, and they weren't really thinking about legal--
You're talking to a running guy?
Well, I don't mean to criticize, it's just, it's a great thing to say we're all going to be in this collaborative partnership legally, if you sign that document, you may be fighting off more than you can choose.
A resolution to their support--
Supporting it.
Would not necessarily, would not, would move that we do the resolution in support of the grant, that they can get it without obligating us--
I'll second.
All right, thank you.
We can do that, come down Thursday, now you know what to do.
I will have to thank her.
Sorry.
That's, that's-- But if we need to chat offline back in a minute--
Then we can figure the MOU, so we all--
As we move on.
Yeah, we move on.
We have to--
We got a motion on the floor, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I do think some of the same questions arise with the city if they're reading it, I'm not sure. You said you mentioned that approved it.
Yeah, we've been talking about it for a few days.
They should have the same concerns.
The grant is for how long?
It's three-year grant, start October and end September.
Remembering to hire somebody onto this grant, when that grant's over, they're going to probably want that person continuing in position, so the participants in this are going to have some money to continue.
Then we'll keep trying to, we get funded, we'll keep going to refinance. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for what you did.
Next, we have a resolution to the Harrison County Board of Supervisors requesting Mississippi Legislature to ensure the Mississippi ambulance system is preserved and advanced through an upper payment limit program sufficient to meet the substantial demands of emergency medical assistance.
Second discussion. What is the upper payment limit, is that the reimbursement through Medicaid and Medicare? Playing an upper, if we have used the upper payment limit, is that the reimbursements that y'all get through, what is the upper payment limit?
It's a federal match program. Hospitals do it, physicians do it, so the ambulance companies will actually send an assessment up to the centers for Medicaid and Medicare, and then the money will be matched and sent back down to help us with reimbursement. Some reimbursements are way too low to cover our costs.
So, that's what you're asking for, is an increase in those reimbursements that you get?
It's not actually, excuse me, it's actually an increase in the reimbursements, it's just matching funds that would come back down. And also, it really doesn't affect our rates at all, but it's money that we can use toward workforce development, or money toward, we're doing a lot of treatment in place right now, so we don't get paid on it all. If we don't transport somebody, we don't get paid for it. So, this is another way to kind of get some money coming back in for those transports.
So, the legislature would have to increase those grants?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. We've actually got, the legislation has gone as far as the Senate, right now, we're into the House, so we expect, we've been working on this for about five years, so we're hoping that this year it'll come to complete fruition. Excuse me?
You think you'll get the legislation to do it?
We're thinking, we, you know, you know, as a legislature, we feel it's promising this year, especially with the pandemic, and they've seen what's happened to our workforce throughout the state of Mississippi. We felt it here in Harrison County, we felt it throughout the state of Mississippi. Our turnover rate in the ambulance industry right now is around 30% nationwide, and the state of Mississippi, the Mississippi Ambulance Alliance did some surveys on about 38 counties, and we're looking at probably close to $104 million in overtime costs just in the state of Mississippi this year. So, this is what this money is to help this company, so we don't go under.
What it sounded like is really the smaller counties are the ones that really suffer more, based on what I've been--
Yes, they are. It's harder to recruit, you know, people like to move to the coast. We're probably one of the easier places to recruit to compared to, say, the Delta, places like that.
We still have the problems too, don't we?
Oh, yes, we are, don't, yes, we are. But, in the Delta, they may be down maybe 30-something percent, and they're sapping compared to, you know, where we are. So, this is mainly to get some money flowing in, so we can do the workforce development, retention bonuses, recruitment bonuses, help pay for these treatments, these trips that we're not getting paid for.
Mr. President, can I ask?
Yes.
So, you've requested this resolution to be mailed?
You can, you can, or you can send it to me, and I can get it up to the Capitol.
So, normally, it's a certified copy from the board. If there's a chairman involved in that committee, we can mail certified copies--
Okay.
--to those committee members, and it's in public health in the House, and is there a Senate bill number?
There is, I can, I can send you all that. We're actually working with Chairman Blackwell, who's over Medicaid, and Chairman Hood, who's the House side of Medicaid.
Yeah, we'll send it to the full committee--
Okay.
--certified, certified resolution, and that gets it going.
Excellent, we're brilliant, we really appreciate it.
Do you have any idea what the total aggregate cost will be of this, or do we know yet? Is there a total aggregate cost, for example, the legislature would have to increase to provide what you're asking for?
There is, the state or the county does not put up any funds, so this is not costing the state or the county any money, the ambulance companies actually put the money up--
Oh, okay.
--and so, there's no cost to the state or the county, and so, each-- And so each ambulance company, there's a formula that's figured out on how much you send up to DC. And so each ambulance company is looked at individually. So it's really not gonna cost the state or the county any money to bring this money down.
And refund all that.
Yes, yes, sir.
Answer my question.
Thanks, Julia, thanks.
Thank you. Got a motion, all in favor of the motions, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries item three, order authorizing initiative extension services to initiate the process of hiring a new office associate.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
No, that's quick.
Aren't you happy to?
Motion carries.
Do I need to approach the board?
No. I like your shirt.
More to you.
I appreciate y'all's time, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank for your support.
Thank you. Item four, order supporting joint effort of SMP DND, SMP DD and Universal Southern Mississippi in their grant proposal to Economic Development Administration for the Gulf Blue Initiative, driving substantially through regional and economic growth.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
On second thought, do you bring it back? That's a good service, I tell you, it's worth every penny we spend on it.
Item four, order supporting joint effort of SMP DND, SMP DD and Universal Southern Mississippi in their grant proposal to Economic Development Administration for the Gulf Blue Initiative, driving substantially through regional and economic growth.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
That's, as I understand it, somebody in the audience making a drastic...
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, you want to come on up?
Sure.
Good.
So, not asking for money, not asking for a partnership, just want a simple support letter. With USM, we're working on a lot of partners, working on a grant application to EDA for the Gulf Blue Initiative that you hear a lot about.
I've never heard about it, that's why I asked him what it is.
Are you serious? Well, we need to get you over to the Gulf and Ship Island building, then. Yes, so, and Biloxi is a part of it, too. All the cities along the coast. But it's basically an initiative to promote the blue economy, whether it be things at the port, whether it be aquaculture, you name it. If it's related to the water, it's pretty much part of the blue economy. And they're looking for ways, as part of this, we're in it, as part of it, to try to connect all of our counties and cities, 10 of ours, of our 15 counties at SMP DND, to the blue economy. Obviously, it'll be a little easier for Harrison County because you're on the Gulf Coast, but trying to find ways also to get some of our more rural areas that are lacking more in innovation and those types of things, but to be able to connect somehow. And it's include rivers and the territories and all. Yeah, it could be anything.
That's the brown stuff.
But it's a pretty, yeah, pretty much. Very competitive grant. And I think there were 500 received in the first phase, applications, 60 were approved. So it's pretty good, and the USM was able to get this. And USM is really the only one in the Gulf that is being looked at now. So it's a great opportunity. I think the total's gonna be like 45, 50 million dollars if they get it, so.
We're talking about more high-tech, to high-tech based jobs and stuff like that?
Yes, it is, trying to get more people.
It's just a natural thing, that requires some technology.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Can we have a motion on the floor, in favor of the motion?
I think I have.
A motion?
Yeah, you have a motion.
All in favor of the motions, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Items, consent agenda items number five through 10 have been placed on consent agenda. Same appearing to be routine, non-controversial matters of which all supervisor likely to agree. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motions, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries item 11. Order setting Saturday, April 9, 2022, at 12:00 PM for the Countywide Eastern Ag Month at the portal locations. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries item 12.
Is there a cause?
It was, it was in the question.
Alright, item 12, tax accessory order spread upon the minutes. Personnel changes for the tax accessory office listed in the file with the payroll clerk personnel department.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries item 13, order acknowledged to receive of and approving petitions for decreases to the 2021 real and personal property rule as recommended by the tax accessory.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries item 14, order acknowledged to receive of and approving petition for the decreases to the 2020 personal property rule as recommended by the tax accessory.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motions, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Under tax accessory. Paula, did you want to bring this up?
Do you want to elaborate?
We're taking over half a million that's changed.
Yeah. Amongst the petitions that were presented for decreases, we included Garden Park, the old Garden Park Hospital was bought out by Singing River Health Systems, and they are requesting an exemption from personal and real property taxes.
And they do have a tax exempt status, correct?
Just so the board knows, they're following up. Got the agreements and read them. Somehow or another, Osters was involved in partnership, to use that term, with Singing River Hospital. As I read the agreement, I couldn't see where it provided, how did they get paid, or how much they're getting paid. We did question it, because obviously, Osters is no different than any lease on governmental property that becomes taxable, this is not a lease. I'm not sure who's running what at Singing River Hospital, or how Osters is actually getting paid, whether they bill independently. That is a question, but as it looks now on paperwork, Singing River Hospital owns it, and they're entitled to, as long as they're operating as a hospital, community hospital.
Because I'm looking at an IRS tax exempt letter as well as Department of Revenue in Mississippi.
It's not, it clearly would be exempt unless the Osters agreement was considered to be somehow a lease, no different than a titleless lease.
Can we insist upon that information, just in case?
We got the agreement, we got the agreements and read it, and they got good loggers, I'll tell you.
You can't tell whether it's a lease or a...
Oh, they're here, maybe they can answer.
Here, in case y'all have questions.
Hold up, Jackie, I didn't know you were back there.
I broke it, Tim. I knew you'd pick on me if you saw me.
I'm not picking on you, I just, I'm not smart enough to read the Osters agreement, figuring out where the money's coming from.
No problem. Well, I'm Jacqueline Turner, the general counsel for Singing River Health System. Singing River Health System owns Singing River Guffport, which we operate with a management services agreement. We do have a strategic partnership agreement with Osters for the overall health system, but it does not constitute a leasehold interest. The Guffport property is operated strictly by the health system, and so I believe it meets the criteria for an exemption, Tim and I talked at great lengths about it.
I don't think there's any question of properties exempt by Singing River. I'm not sure about the strategic partnership agreement, because I couldn't quite figure out Osters got paid.
Right now, Osters doesn't get paid.
Okay, well, that makes why, figures where I could figure it out.
There we go, that's right.
They don't get paid?
Well, no, right now it's...
I don't know anybody that's doing it.
Well, it's more, so there's a, kind of like a marketing and branding. So you see, like on the Guffport Hospital, it's in partnership with Osters, and so there is that kind of intangible benefit that it has through the strategic partnership agreement. And, you know, one day, maybe it looks different, but at least right now, it's really not in partnership.
Just like our purchasing powers and things like that, like as per scale, if we purchase more of those items, we get that a lower, lesser amount.
To create some synergies.
If I understand what you're saying, as of today, the way Tim read it is, that they qualify for this exemption.
Yes, sir.
But you're talking about something that you're saying as of now.
Well, you just never know if something changes.
And if something changes between the relationship between Osters and Singing River, this board needs to be informed of it and check to see if you still qualify for over a $600,000 exemption from this county. And that's what I'd like to be assured of.
There's no question that Singing River Hospital, as a community hospital, would be exempt. The question doesn't have anything to do with Singing River, it really has to do with, no different than a, let's just say a titleless lease, because we do this all the time.
I understand.
If the government leases it to a private entity, that lease becomes taxable.
And what's other criteria for an exemption?
This is not a lease.
I understand that, but she...
It's an agreement?
As of now, that some may in the future will change.
And I'm not reading any TV on.
The relationship between Osters and Singing River will change.
If it does, if, just hypothetically.
If it does, then I think we need to be informed of that, that the tax...
Sure. I will personally get with Tim and Ms. Lattner and let them know in the event something like that changes. You have my oath as a officer of the court.
Thank you.
Alright, can I answer any other questions for y'all? And just really quick, if I may, Tiffany Murdock, as you spoke a minute ago, she's been named our interim CEO, so hopefully you will see some good things about her. She's been the administrator for our Guffport property, so we're really excited to have her leading the charge right now, and maybe we'll be back in front of you with some good news here in the future. But if I have other questions, Tim, if y'all have questions, send it to me.
Thank you.
Alright, thank y'all.
Thank you. We voted on that, right? Yeah, okay. Item 15, order approving registration fees for tax collectors' employees, Chastity Wood, Ariel, Ariel Niquez, and Stephanie Marsh to attend the Mississippi Tax Collector's Education and Certification Training, Collector of Revenue, One Course, March 20 through April 1, 2020, 2020, 2020, 2020, Mississippi.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries item 16, order approving substantially, substantive completion, change order number one, acknowledged to receive of the closing documents between Harrison County Board of Supervisors and E. Cornell Malone Corp., approving the final payment application of 383-565 to E. Cornell Malone Corporation for the renewal of the Department of Human Services building, bill from 177367681, recommended by Jacqueline Turner. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries item 17, order warning, BS for West Blood's launch, project 2G, Talia Construction, Inc., for the base bid amount of $2,999,319,85, based on their lowest investment bid total, and authorizing the board president to execute the contract documents after legal review. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Padlan?
Camelia Food Lodge, that we've been working on now for...
Is that shot?
Yeah. We're a short bit.
That's gonna be a nice one for the resolution.
It's gone, it was $2 million, it's gone up $1 million since we first started.
Everything's going up, man. And all in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries item 18, order approving master services contract agreement with nine consultants for Harrison County, offer funded projects based on the recommendation of the selection committee as recommended by Jacqueline Turner, and here, and authorizing the board president to execute the agreement on legal review. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
So, am I understanding this, we're gonna hire all nine of them? We need nine consultants?
The plan is to execute tires with all of them to rotate through the dozens of contracts we expect to have.
Basically, it sounds like you're giving up front money, don't you?
Basically, what we're saying is that these engineering firms are qualified to do these projects. And Jackie, I would assume, will assess, based on each project, which firm is suited for that particular project.
Jackie, did you ever add another $40 million with the projects like we talked about?
I'm working on it right now, it's not submitted yet.
We need to share that.
We need a list.
Yeah, we need a list, because this is the time to take it.
Yes, hon.
Please.
Ones that we approved here.
We did the first one.
About a month ago, how long ago has it been? Couple of months?
There's still some uncertainty out there about the matching, you know.
I will, I will send you a current...
Those are important.
Mr. Hoesman's office indicated that we should have given 80 million as opposed to 40. I just don't want to come up with anything that's not yet, so.
I have one question.
We got several.
Okay. Just because of what y'all just said, Jackie's gonna select which project, is this board gonna, just so the board's clear, Jackie's gonna do that without coming back to the board, or with coming back to the...
No, I won't talk to you, come back. I thought this was just...
Why she makes an American bid, she'll come back to the board.
I'm sure for that, that's what it says about.
That's one of the things that we need, this board needs to think about. We know we've got 20 million in the bank, don't we?
Yes.
Yes.
What about the other 20 million that we're assured of?
We haven't received it yet.
We haven't received it. What we need to do is, if we know we've got $20 million in the bank, we need to decide to go on and start some of these projects.
Yes.
Within the 20 million dollar amount. We don't want to, we don't want to contract out for more than the money we actually have in hand. But we need to prioritize, and we know we have $20 million, issue some, issue some contracts, get those projects on the road.
Well, we know that the priority of the water and sewer.
Not really.
Well, I'm talking about prioritize the water and sewer project.
They're already dry shots, so she gets programmed with the...
Because the longer you wait, the inflation is gonna eat up this money. And I'm just simply saying, we don't need to make sense of sitting here for 20, with $20 million in the bank. We need to decide how we're gonna spend.
They did that presentation, I specifically asked, are these prioritized, and the answer was no.
They said yes.
No, they said no.
I thought the reason that we got the utility authority involved in the first place was because they prioritized each one of those programs.
When I asked the question, they're bullets, it's not.
They were in general kind of priority, but not a hard set one, and y'all are welcome to switch them around as you want.
We send them to us, so we can all vote.
Absolutely, y'all have all the ones that you've already approved, as well as ones we considered, and we can discuss that next week.
Yeah, we can discuss that next week, right?
Yes, we can do that by 12:00.
You haven't heard anything back from Mr. Hoesman's office on the list that we sent already?
Not since we discussed it, no.
I don't think they're too sure.
No.
We don't know what the federal government's doing with all of that.
I know it cost me 60 bucks to fill up my car yesterday, guys, I do know that.
Okay, so based on item 18, you will make a selection and get back with the board for approval on those firms?
From what I'm hearing here, what I hear is that you're okay with having master services contracts, so we have them in place with these nine, and that as we proceed, you want me to bring back, this is who I like to assign as a project.
Yes, and in the meantime, send us the list that's already been approved, and the list that's working on now, so we can put this to bed.
Yes.
Alright, alright. Did we vote on that? I don't think we do, so in discussion, okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries item...
Can we, before we get out, if we bring this up on item 17, which is the West Blood's AP, is that the owner in front of?
Boat Lodge.
That's in front of Treasure Bay.
Camelia Street.
Camelia, Treasure Bay, well, we've never been able to get, that's fine, but you gotta, everybody needs to remember, we've not been able to get the owner there to straighten out. We've got an easement, and the easement requires that we name the park after his father.
Right.
But the easement, Jackie wanted a different easement because of, because of boats trying to make the turn in there. And so, we don't have that, and that won't stop you from building the boat.
Right, there's enough room with or without their blessing.
Making sure we have not been able to get a response from them.
It's been six years, figured it out. We can just cut the parking spots.
Making sure you're aware, in case somebody complains about not being able to make the turn.
We don't have to give lease, Tyler, at least, do we, Tim?
Uh, we don't need a title, please, any longer for Boat Launch.
Item 19, order approving the final plat for the Highland, Highland subdivision, phase four, located in section 18, times six, south range nine, west, supervised, voting District One, versus District, as recommended by Jaclyn Turner. Motion.
It's not District One, right?
District One, motion. Second. Discussion.
Once again, now.
Discussion. What's the latest on this, Tim?
Second. Got a, got a second?
Second.
For discussion? Okay, discussion.
I seconded it.
Jackie.
This is just, um, the final plat is ready on the next phase of this subdivision that's been ongoing. All their paperwork, all the construction, everything is in place.
So what happens now?
If you approve it, we, um, let them record the final plat, and they can start moving, going and building houses in that section.
All zoning and everything.
Yeah, this is all the, the construction is complete, and we've inspected it. Everything's in place, and it's ready to move on without building.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item... Twenty, order approving the funding agreement with MIMA to request, to request reimbursement for a new, therefore generated FEMA hazard mitigation program, as authorized the board president to sign and sign. Motion. Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item one, order authorizing approval of the Second Amendment to the antenna site lease schedule. Crown Castle is recommended by the Harrison County Emergency Communication Commission, after a meeting on February 15, 2022, and authorizing the board president to sign and sign. Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Is Matt in here, or he's gone? Oh, there he is. Hey, Matt. I'm sorry. I can't see out of him when I... I'm gonna get that fixed, though. There was a, is there a charge from Biloxi on one of these antennas? Because at one time, we had a discussion about that, and I know you're, you're not, you're relative, too, and I didn't know. We, we had, I think they had agreed not to charge us, but...
This particular lease is for the Gulfport South, or Gulfport.
So it doesn't include all of them, it just includes...
Right. This provides service to everything south of I-10 and the Gulfport area.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. You don't have to get up. You can answer to the booth.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 22, on the youth court, order approving transfer that listed for the youth court.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 23, order approving transfer in the amount of 600, no, $600 for 001-181-6412, 001-181919, to cover the cost of price increase of sulfur to be purchased to their, to finance the youth court vegetation center. Motion.
Question.
Second. Discussion. I think the address is wrong here, Nicole. You've got at the Maple's Drive campus, but there is no youth court.
Yeah, it's the trailer. Yeah, the yellow trailer.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right, in further discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 24, order approving eight employees to work the following holidays, special events needed, trash pickup, and sand beach, and trash disposal.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 24, order approving out of state and county travel as listed.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 26, zoning.
Yes, sir. Um, one of our cases, number 30 on the agenda, was appealed last Friday. So I'd ask you to pull that out, we'll see that, you know, we'll see if the date hasn't been set yet, and that'll come up. So, uh...
Which, which case?
Number 30. The case file number is 17.
Which one is that?
It's at the very bottom of the page.
It's number 30.
Going through all this.
On page 11.
Yeah, I don't have any.
Page 14.
Where is it located?
It's in Socher's, south of Robinwood subdivision, and on Old Highway, the west side of Old Highway.
Quickly, what changed in the landscaping?
Um, these are the new rules that make it easier to follow and precisely tell when it's required. So before, we would have a big fight every time a new business located in, uh, in an old location about having to do it. So that's spelled out in the ordinance now. There's also a credit for keeping existing trees on properties, both commercial and residential.
And I wanna say, if I may, that, Mr. President, if I may.
Sure.
I went to, to Foley, Biloxi, all these little small towns in Alabama that are leading into, uh, the Guff, Guff of Mex, Guff, Guff Shores. I'll say it in a minute, Guff Shores. And it was absolutely beautiful, because they had taken time to have landscaping. There were nice stores in there. Everybody was keeping their property up. It just gives you a sense of pride and ownership. And if we're a tourist destination, like we claim we are, I mean, I think that, that landscape, this is very, very important. And we've just neglected it for far too long.
Every national franchise comes in with a landscaping plan, but local businesses really struggle with that expense of getting it started.
You can definitely, I mean, it's not that expensive, but you see...
In the grand scheme of it.
I mean, I just, I notice Biloxi's, every new building, they have a landscape, you know, they landscape the building, and it just sticks out as something nice to look at, just like, just like a good-looking woman, Marlon, and, you know. You gotta look at them first before you look at all of somebody's sand. Anyway.
I think that's important. I don't have a problem with landscaping. I just don't want it to become burdensome in areas where, you know, like Tony said, that the, it's not really that important to tourists.
No, it is important to tourists. He means up in the county where people aren't going to rent a hotel.
That's exactly right. So I mean, and some is, is, you know, I, I don't have a problem with it, but I just don't get over burgers, especially.
So Pat, on number 30, the only opposition exhibit I see is like a handwritten mumbo jumbo. It doesn't even make sense.
Well, 30 is the one that was called, so I, I don't know what's in your legislation.
So it's been pulled out, so we're not gonna vote on it today.
That's the only one that I'm asking Matt to be with.
Gotcha.
So I'll make a motion to take the recommendation of Mr. Bond, with the exception of number 30.
Second.
The 30 needs to be tabled.
Well, it needs to be tabled. It will be rescheduled, the law will appeal at some point.
But it can't be a, or it's occurring if it's still appealed.
I say with the exception of number 30.
You gotta do something with it, otherwise it sits on the agenda.
Well, we can approve this, and then I can go back and take it.
Make another motion, okay. Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
One question before we, if I may. How did they get on the agenda if there was an appeal?
Um, the appeal deadline was Friday, so we tried to get them to get on the agenda, because...
My deadline is Tuesday, so...
Right, that I already said.
Yeah, it's just handwritten.
Okay. Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to table item number 30.
Second.
All in favor, table item number 30. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. So... Next, up on the personnel, item 37, order authorizing the FEMA Resources Department to run credit checks on the background check process to Scott Robinson Associates, in order to implement a new process for bonding employees. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Yeah, what, um, are we not currently doing this? This is something new to...
Credit check.
Yeah. So we're, the bonding process had been done in the departments prior to now, and I think it costs $100 for a bond to get bonded. Um, so what we're trying to do on the front end is 750, it, it costs $7.50 for a credit check versus $100 to be bonded. So we're just trying to add that to our new hire process with the background check.
Okay, so my question was, are we currently doing credit checks?
No.
Okay. My next question is, it's an additional, this won't replace the bond, correct? It'll just be in addition to?
Correct.
Gotcha.
It's more bad to explain, because ultimately, what happens, I think, what we're just doing is trying to avoid incurring a $100 expense by doing our own credit check, and we, somebody's got bad credit, and I'm getting bonded, so you're only spending $7.50 rather than...
Instead of $100.
So you do that first.
Right. The bonding company is going to do its own credit check, so even though our credit check passes, the bonding company can still re-victim based on their credit check, and that has happened before. It's just, you may not actually say the expense, but at least you're making an effort to, because it costs $100 to do the application for the bond.
Gotcha.
But you're just trying to reduce it down to $7.50, and she'll know what kind of time.
That seems very, I mean, if you, if you, if you have bad credit, you may have bad credit, because you don't have a job. If you have a job, you can't get bad.
The problem is, all, all of the bonds that you obtain have a indemnification provision. So even though you have a bond that ensures the county, if that bond is called upon, then that bond will, has a provision that they go, the bonding company goes after the employee, so they wanna make sure that they only have people they collect from. They're not in the business to lose money, so insurance companies aren't.
I know, but it just seems unfair.
All right.
Now, this, we gotta be careful with credit check, so, but that cannot be, this has to be highly confidential.
Well, that's certainly, it has a lot of, you know, confidential.
All right.
Don't get, escape.
Could I, in further discussion, all in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 38, order concurrent with the road management department assistant on power, payroll, personal department. Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, there needs to be a correction. That date has been moved up from the 17th to 31st.
I don't know what's saying.
Yes, on number two.
Oh, number two?
Right.
Yes, all two.
He's not retiring until March 30th, or?
30, right.
Yes.
Get that correction. Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item... That's enough. 39, order concurrent with the county administrator on the department that listed on file with payroll clerk, personal department.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 40, spreading on the minutes, personnel changes of the sheriff's office, and on file with payroll clerk.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 41, order spreading on the minutes, personnel change of the district attorney's office, and on file with payroll clerk, and personal department.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 42, order to acknowledge receipt of order from the Second Court, Second Circuit Court District, appointing and setting tally for staff as follows.
Motion.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item, uh, 43, order approving advertising for bids for two, 40 by, I know we got it correct, 40 by 50, and one times 11 feet tall metal office building, used for background, but we do have a correction on that. And I think we're gonna have, it's gonna be, and we have Greg in further discussion, we're gonna have, it's gonna be changed to one, 40 foot by 50 foot by 11 feet tall, and one, 40 feet by 80 feet by 11 feet tall. Is that correct, Greg?
Yes, sir, that's correct. And that, that's just so that we don't lose office space in the back offices. Um, we found it more feasible and also more economical for us to have two buildings instead of one big building.
Okay. Good, did we get that? We have it here, if you wanna see it. You wanna get my answer?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. And next, we have the, uh, sheriff, the recognized sheriff, as he, as he represents, if it's reported, the number of personnel persons currently held at the Harrison County Jail facility, and as the stuff of management.
Uh, currently, we have 759, 29 misdemeanors, 170 females, 105 that have cleared state arrest, and 36 federal offenses.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. Item 45, order authorizing the board president to execute the Mississippi Gulf Coast Restoration Fund Program, contract modification form. Motion.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 46, order authorizing disposal of inactive records listed with the L, with the L for disposal in accordance with the retention schedules previously approved by the local government Records Committee and adopted by Board of Supervisors. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Order authorizing the board president to sign the Mississippi Development Authority Gulf Coast Restoration Fund Request for Cash for Service Date October 5, 2021, January 12, 2022. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 48, order considering approving mileage reimbursement for in-count of travel. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 49, order approving mileage reimbursement for in-count of travel, in-count of travel for the following employees.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 50, order approving the public sale agreement of Long Beach Auto Auction, Inc., conducted county auction May 14, 2022, and authorizing the board president to execute the same.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Order authorizing disposal of assets for attached list and authorizing inventory clerk to remove the same from inventory. Motion.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 52, order acknowledge receipt of the January 2022, 2022 travel and procurement caused as follows.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Order authorizing reimbursement of the road fund, 150-000-360, in amount of $1,524, 80 payable from road protections fund, 10 feet, 156-355-581, for removal of pure section of Coon Street.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 54, order authorizing following the funnel on every payment for the tax schedule.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 55, order authorizing reimbursement in amount of 188-98 to the General Fund, 001-200-542, for work performed on five stations, services being available for 106-250-542, details attached.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Order approving payment of the following claims. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, further discussion.
57,000, uh, 950, uh, Mr. West, was that the fee? Was that much, uh, collection involved?
That's correct.
Yes.
I think that's correct.
That's, that's paid by the taxpayer.
Paid by the taxpayer.
I understand that, 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 that had, that's a lot of collections.
There were some big ones in there.
Yeah, there must have been some big ones.
Maritzaville was huge. They paid two years.
That one just, that just jumped out, so there had to be some big ones involved, yeah.
And they reduced them to, they didn't collect the full amount. That's what I'm standing on, and that's...
I remember the issues we had before, the year, year before.
All in further discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 57, order authorizing any Harrison County constable to serve sheriff's notice for tax him with maturity, permanent city code of 1972, 24, 27, 433, as recommended by the chancellor, and sheriff. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 58, order approving the request of the City of Gulfport, inform illegal services to advertise and set up a buffer zone in the beach area from 15th Street to 20th Avenue, as, as a viewing area only, only for the 4th, July 2022 fireworks.
Motion.
The second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed... Out opposed? Motion carries item fifty.
I should have asked, may I read this, that, how does Chuck feel about that?
He's the one that said it.
He said it is, okay.
It's not the way it's working.
Does, they said it to him, but he said no.
Item fifty-nine order.
He doesn't have a problem with it.
That's what they do every year.
Item fifty-nine order proving travel for, for Becky Payne and Carolyn Hall, election commission to attend the D C A M twenty twenty-two annual election seminar and training conference, April five in Jackson.
Motion?
Second?
Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye? Out opposed? Motion carries. Order authorizing budget amendment in amount of one seventy-six, three thousand four, to one five oh, three hundred nine one six, for the purchase of three sweepers for the, for the road departments that would pay out of fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget, should have been paid out fiscal twenty twenty-one budget.
The judge has some fine sweepers, so. It's not like that they are. That's nice.
They do a good job.
Yeah, and they ain't closed, so they don't breathe that dust.
That's correct.
They have a stereo system too.
Oh, yeah.
In further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye? Out opposed? Motion carries item six-one, order approving submission of grant application, amount of thirty-four, four forty, fifteen with the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality for Harrison County money, household hazards waste program, Rockville, Florida, Mississippi. Motion?
Second? For the Rockville dump.
For the Rockville dump.
All in favor of the motion, say aye?
All hazards.
Out opposed? Motion carries. Item sixty-two proven payment of two thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-three cents to alter planning and design invoice number zero zero twenty twenty, one six six sixteen, professional service on project S T P zero zero two four, zero 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 five four, F P A, active living initiative, service period, January one through January twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two, payable from three one two, five four zero five five five, authorizing, after, and along, if, if needed to reimbursement received, motion?
Motion?
Second?
Discussion? All in favor, say aye? Out opposed? Motion carries item sixty-three order authorizing payment to Brighter Care Health Strategies LLC for services listed.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor, say aye? Out opposed? Motion carries item sixty-four, order take, order annihilation receipt of check number eight three, eight five, in amount of two thousand one eighty, for parking fees collected by friends of court volunteered at the Pastor Sam Margaret Parade, to be deposited in zero zero one, one eight two, two nine eight, and authorized transferring the same, that's, to count zero zero one, one eight two, forty six. Motion?
Such a discussion, why is that? Explain that to me, I, I, I have problems following that particular.
Me too, were they leasing county property?
Was it county property?
No, it was.
Who knows?
An individual person allowed him to, as a, I guess it was a fundraiser.
As a fundraiser, to use their property?
And then they contributed, donated whatever they raised to the friends of the court. And we're accepting it so that they can use it to put back into their budget.
I couldn't figure out.
I was on the same page as you.
He showed up with the, the check and I was like. So, so we're spreading it, we're using it in their budget for that.
It's really a donation.
Yeah, like when people gave me checks for the shelter years ago, I would just give them to y'all and you spread them.
We weren't involved in the leasing of the building, we're just accepting it as a donation.
Right.
Yeah, usually donations are going to the general fund, but this, this is specifically for that.
I just couldn't understand what to do.
It's still administered as any fund to the county.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye? Out opposed? Motion carries. Item sixty-five is order proven travel to Julia's unclaved veteran affairs directed to attend the Mississippi Association of County Veterans meeting, be held on March tenth through eleventh, twenty twenty-two, in Jackson, Mississippi, at No Cost to County.
Motion?
Second?
Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye? Out opposed? Motion carries. Item sixty-six order approving the request of Coast Electric Power Association to use a great rock parking area across, across the street from the Harrison County soccer fields. Soccer fields on Countess Farm Road and Walmart ball fields. That tent cities of material staging areas, which is what we're going to do here, it's, it's, motion?
Motion?
Second?
Discussion? All in favor, say aye? Out opposed? Motion carries. Item sixty-seven order adjudicating authorized expenditure, there's listed and necessary advertising opportunities and the resources of Harrison County. Motion?
Motion?
Second?
Second?
Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye? Out opposed? Motion carries. And that's it. Mr. Tim Harvey, everything?
That old lead order on Carter, that's actually, Carter. Carter, egregious.
Oh, I have been ready for this too.
Okay, we'll do it next week, just want to make sure.
Mr. Angley, everything? So by the last, so by the, what?
I did, I don't know how many of y'all saw this, notice for a public hearing appeared in the Sun Herald on March first, twenty twenty-two, establishing the code and zone guidelines for medical marijuana distributors as well as growers. This is the first time I've ever seen this, and I'm.
It's a little premature.
It's very premature.
Action on that before that would be submitted.
This was submitted by Matt Bunk, who I just texted to come back, but he didn't. But I would like to make a motion that we tell the planning commission to cancel this hearing until we talk about this.
We haven't even accepted whether we're going to opt in or opt out, right?
We need to take action.
So I'll make that motion.
Second?
Come on, to opt in or opt out? It was a deadline to opt in or opt out.
We've got to decide whether to opt in or opt out before we have a public hearing.
I'm fine with opting in, I'm doing that, but this I'm not good with because this, this is, we got one department, it's premature, and one department deciding where and how and when all this stuff can go in, and I think that should be the decision of this board.
We need a map.
We're the ones that can make this decision.
They would be the ones to make the proposal.
But you don't have a hearing for it.
I agree with you.
Okay, all in favor of the motion to cancel? All in favor of that motion, say aye? Out opposed?
What do you, what, you're having them cancel this, right?
Yeah, that was, my motion was to cancel that because they shouldn't have put this, they got to.
You should have a workshop of some kind before.
Which I'm, that's fine, but this is a little.
Nobody is. Out of their pay grade.
Hearing at their regular zone and meetings, what it is.
Answer the public here on the medical marijuana part.
Until the board decides to opt in, that depends on the order.
And they, and the state is still working on, they're going to come up with a lot of these rules already, we're just jumping here. Pat jumped the gun here.
Just tell me if anybody shows up, that Pat must have been smoking something.
We got that. All in favor?
I hope you opt in because we didn't get a nervous affliction.
We did vote, we voted on that, right?
Yeah, and I've got a couple of things here for the, really for Jackie to maybe include in her things to consider, one is that I V D building that may or may not qualify for this order of money, but if we're looking for projects, we can throw that in, we got another one here for those diversions. I didn't know where you were on coming up with more projects, but if y'all haven't seen this I V D building, it's pretty sad.
It is sad, I actually went there after you, Beverly, and totally a hundred percent agree, Jack and me, that a whole list.
Jackie, are you familiar with this? That was really on the line. I wouldn't want to do anything about the Summerfield. Summerfield, see you later.
Oh, oh, that's the fact. Yeah, I'd wait on that.
Okay, that's one thing, maybe Tim can help me, I, I don't know what we ought to redistrict him.
Redistricting, I don't either, other than S M P D, E D D is supposed to be.
They should be, I, I've sent.
We got to have some workshops and stuff like that, that's kind of behind the curve.
I sent Allison a email and she responded one day last week, because I need, I said, where are we?
I think they're over it.
We asked them.
I think they need to come up and then let us look at it and then work, if there's any discrepancies or differences that we have as board members, then we can discuss what.
Get someone from.
J R P C is doing the math and part of it.
They're just going to come to us at the next meeting in Belugli.
I think they're going to request a work session.
Yes, we need that too. So we get them Monday, at least, we kind of get up to speed on it, then we go from there.
Come on, babe.
And one other thing is to the sheriff, as far as spring break and all that upcoming, we pretty good shaking getting prepared for that?
Uh, we haven't had any meetings on it lately, but yeah, same game plan we always have.
To my knowledge, there's not the book at the Coliseum yet.
Not for that, not in April.
No promoters or, you got to understand, there's no promoter.
Never have been.
So, I mean, there's nobody in charge of anything, so. It's difficult to manage when you don't know who's doing what.
But they usually do have.
A concert.
A concert at the Coliseum, but Matt said nothing was booked yet.
Not, but not doing April, right? Okay, so I have supervisor Rocko.
Yes, sir, um, I would like to, I was talking to Robbie and different people, and I had an incident where my husband got scammed.
Got what?
He got scammed.
Oh, scam?
For, he, it says amazon.com, and then when you go into customer service and you call them, you get, you don't always get the person that you're calling. It's not Amazon at all, it's some guy over in, I don't know where, the Philippines or somewhere, can't hardly understand him, they try to talk him anyway. He ended up getting his last four social and his driver, anyway, I was screaming, don't give me any, because I'm paranoid about everything, but anyway, there are a lot of, of seniors that are getting scammed out there, and, um, I think that our I T department could reach out to our, and would, could combine maybe with S M P D D, if we can get a grant, and some, um, training and education from Robbie's, um, uh, department, and he may have to add some people. Also, um, they could go to our senior citizen centers and try to start help, because it really is detrimental to our citizens, our, our, our senior citizens. And, um, if y'all would allow me to look into that and get more, you know, more of a program set up and bring it back to you and see how you like it, is there any, does anybody have a problem with that?
No. I agree.
May I, are you all right with that?
My wife brought, our babysitter's granddaughter to me one time, who had been done one of those things, cost her fifteen hundred dollars, and so she wanted me to try to get her money back, so I sat down at the computer, ten o'clock night, drafted this big, long email to this fellow who had taken her money, and, you know, I'm glad that I turned it over to the Consumer for Architecture Program, I pressed send, got up on my computer to go to bed, and I heard boop, and I looked, and there was already a response. And so I go back and click on it, goes, you Americans are so stupid. It made me so mad, I sat down and got, went to the FBI's website, found the, you know, contact, sent copies of everything by email to the, and they called me, the FBI called me the next day and basically said, Mr. Alvin, this is a computer somewhere in Nigeria. Which is shut down just like that.
There's nothing, we put out health announcements all the time with, you, you wouldn't believe the people that show up to the jail with a green card, a green dot card, saying we're here to turn ourselves in. We talk at senior centers, we do, um, we do everything we can do, there's, there's no way to change people's aspects of thinking they're going to get something for nothing.
Well, this is not something for nothing, this is like educate, and we were like asking for customer service education.
It comes through the state with the state seal on it, it comes through Amazon, it comes through U P S, it comes through FedEx.
We're out like two days.
You can put as much, it's the same thing as, as we tell people, lock your car doors before you go to bed, and the next morning we're burgling your car because they pulled your door and got your gun out of it.
Yeah, but Troy, I got a thing once, and it said Mississippi State, uh, I'm sorry, the, uh, oh my God, Michael Watson, Secretary of State, that I owe, you know, for all my businesses, my little eighty dollars, whatever, for my rehab, and I called my accountant, said, go ahead and pay these, and he said, bring them to me, I brought it to him, he said, this is a third party. So how can even educated people?
It's just like, it's, it's.
Well, and the seal and it's real.
You can put as much money as you want to put in, grant money to do, to talk to everybody, and, and the next day, you're going to have the same person.
At least they have.
Yeah, but we can educate this.
They, they need to be educated, because I know, when, when my husband goes in and he said, and he said, electrical engineer, he's not a dummy, you know, but he's, and he puts Am, Amazon, and then right under there is customer service, and you get somebody, I mean, and then when you call Amazon, I'm sorry, they're not affiliated with us. Hello? Well, don't you have any responsibility, anyway, I just feel like at least they can understand how to get on the phone, and I, I, I just think it would be a good program.
Give an example, we had, last week, had a guy from Porover County call me, and the guy was dead serious, and he said, can you go to the airport and escort three hundred pounds of gold to Porover County? Excuse me, he said, this is a true story, and he said, um, he said, I ordered three hundred pounds of gold, the guys are at the airport with it right now, he said that, that one of your guys that works at the airport wants a hundred dollar fee for them to leave the airport with it. And I said, we don't work there, I said, that's Gulfport Police Department, and I knew it was a scam immediately, so, and he said, well, the guys are sitting there, you know, and they're teaming, we're ready to go. And I said, they're from Nigeria, I said, yeah, there's nobody there at the airport. That was a hundred and twenty grand, what he spent.
Oh, my word.
They scare people too, they'll call, tell them they're the I R A S.
I had a lady come, yeah, I had, came in my office.
Or the sheriff's department, they'll do it, law enforcement, all the time.
I had a lady come in my office.
The only thing, that, that little girl did disagree with the FBI, because this little girl's money was wired to Tulsa, Oklahoma, Western Union, somebody picked it up there and then wired it on to, to wherever it went to out of the country.
Why did she think she was on good?
A car, she had ordered a car, and it was, it was too good to be true, the car was going to be delivered, and she, fifteen hundred dollars down, and thirty-five hundred dollars when it got here, and it was a car that's worth twenty grand, so she should have known, was her heart, she was about eighteen years old, worked at McDonald's, and had saved up all this money to buy a car, so it was pretty pitiful, but she just felt for a scam, and, um, I did tell the FBI, so, Mr. Alvin, that's a nameless person too, that just went there and probably got some kind of email, and they probably paid them a hundred dollars to go down there and wire it on.
And they own the Western Union?
I'll be looking at it.
Yeah, they own all the Western Union, I mean, they.
It's frustrating sometimes when you see that.
I don't guess it hurts to try to impound, but I, I wouldn't be optimistic.
I had a lady that came in my office crying because they told her that she was about to be arrested because she had not paid something, it was PayPal, they, they went through PayPal, and they scammed her out of like three, two thousand dollars, and that was, there was a rash of that.
Come on.
That's why I go shopping at the store where they pay.
One way to help prevent that is if you get the phone call, the email, the text, the mail, whatever it is, never respond to that phone number or that address that you receive, even if you get the phone call, credit card number, don't respond to that, go to their official website.
We did.
Or go to your credit card, that number, respond to that.
Thought we did, well, we, we, he went through, you just, you know, Amazon, and then, and it was right underneath it, under, you know, when they give you. Because it's just amazon.com, it was right under it.
Connie, you know the common denominator, that is.
What?
You order too much off Amazon.
I know. I don't, honey, no. I order too much at walking into the store at the Rossville's and getting it. That's where I get mine. Because they pay abolon tax.
I like to...
But my husband, he's fascinated with Amazon. He loves that Amazon. But that was just an example. I don't want to do the whole program just because of that. But that brought true delight to other complaints that I've heard, how that's happened. Talked to Robbie about it and he understands it. Other people say that, you know, we just need to have some, at least in the law. But, um, and the other thing, this is kind of petty maybe, but we used to have an In God We Trust picture up here. And it was from Amy Tuck. And I can't find it and I'd love to see if the board would have it, put it back. Remember it? They came in and talked about it. That's the other thing.
Do you want to make a motion? I'll second it.
I don't remember if I was having to worry.
I make a motion.
I can get another one.
Second.
Can you repeat that?
Make a motion to replace the In God We Trust.
She can't find it, ain't supposed to put it back.
We can provide... Replace it or we can get it.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
It belongs in company.
Motion care.
But it'll be more looking.
Supervisor.
Done. Thank you.
So, good news. The person who has been stealing the catalytic converters off of a lot of our vehicles is in custody right now.
Yay.
And, um, our Lyman Senior... Yes, we caught them. I mean, not me, but, um... Um, and the two vehicles at the Lyman Senior Center are completely... They don't... Sometimes they don't start. They're not safe. So I'd like to get the two broken vehicles removed from the Lyman Senior Center. But we will need one car because we deliver meals to La Boye. And I'd like one safe car, even if it's cheap, but just safe for them to drive.
There wasn't, in line of what Rebecca's talking about, Pam, there was a car up at the La Boye Center too. The catalytic converter was cut out of it. What was that car doing, that parked in the back of that facility? Did we ever find out?
The catalytic?
Whose car was it? Why was it left behind in the Boye Center for... If you're looking for something to be stolen, that's where you need to park it.
I don't know because each center probably has... Each center has a vehicle assigned to it. So that must be the center vehicle. I don't know why it's being parked in the back.
You mean it's parked? It's left there? I wouldn't leave any vehicle up there.
I don't know. Uh, they have a... They... Each center has a vehicle. I don't know where they park them or whatever. But they each have a vehicle because they have to go, I guess, come into the office. If they have to come to the office sometimes, I guess, for their meetings.
I sure wouldn't leave it in the back of that facility.
I don't know if they leave... Where they leave it, but they would have. So they had one stolen at one time. They had, y'all had two stolen. They don't have any... None of those centers have fenced-in areas. The only fenced-in area they have... Yeah, the only fenced-in area they have is the one at the main office.
They have cameras up at such a... So once we do get a vehicle, I'd like to ask the sheriff if we could start parking it over by you. Would that be okay, since you're right next door to us at Lyman? Could we park that at night, just at night at your place? At the farm?
Yeah.
It's less likely to be stolen. Okay. And, uh, doot 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 doo. Do you have cameras? Oh, and that was it? Um, no, that wasn't it. Yes, do have cameras. I'm just gonna give this to you. It's from Gulfport Money. Uh, we can put it on next week, just wanting sponsorship. And if we have time, since it's kind of early, I would like, if y'all wouldn't mind, taking twelve minutes. I went to Jackson last week. I know we've spoken to... Beverly and I have met with them. We spoke to Methodist Children's Homes. We've been together a hundred and twenty-five years. And they place the most at-risk unwanted... Once children are through the system and so beaten up, nobody wants them anymore, they can live there, not only for a night or a day, but for years until they're able to get a job. They have apartments there. They get them jobs. They get them tuition. And it's quite amazing, so...
Rebecca.
I shot video, but I can wait if y'all want for next week.
Let me just interrupt you for one second.
Okay.
I asked Pat Bump...
Oh, yes.
I asked Pat Bump to come back so he would know that this board passed a motion for you to cancel that public hearing that you jumped out there and planned on the medical marijuana.
Very good.
We haven't even voted whether we're gonna opt in or opt out yet, so it's a little premature. A lot premature.
Who told you to do that?
I've been following it from the beginning and I jumped the gun.
Too proactive.
Okay.
All right.
Before Rebecca starts, y'all want to hear the... Finish the trial of Aldrich versus the Secretary of State. Could have gone better, in my opinion. We got forty-five days to submit briefs and then seven days for rebuttal. Secretary of State asked for additional time because their attorney had some trial in between. So it went well. Unfortunately, we had to spend money on experts, so it was somewhat expensive, but we're dividing amongst the three governmental entities.
You got the court then, Tim?
We got everything we need to get in. It couldn't have gone better. They put on no evidence at all. They're gonna... The problem in the case occurred long before we ever got in it. Their... Aldrich filed a complaint, which was dismissed. Secretary of State filed a counter complaint. So what we're gonna hear from the Secretary of State is Aldrich's complaint was dismissed, therefore, uh, they couldn't seek relief. But that's not the law and not gonna be a problem, I don't think. That's what they're gonna argue. So they're gonna try to get it dismissed on a technicality.
The Secretary of State is...
Yes.
They're trying to get it dismissed. So then what? We go back and re-five or how's that work?
That's a good question. I don't think that's gonna happen, so we don't have to worry about it. Ultimately, the Secretary of State's counter complaint that they filed, the Aldrich's, said the same thing the Aldrich's complaint said, so... I don't think it's a problem. That's just, they ain't got anything else to say. They can't claim that that area was not artificially filled as a result of the oyster industry because the evidence is overwhelming on that. And they put on no evidence as to where the artificial accretions came from, which is their obligation. The Secretary of State's have to prove that it was not done as a result of the oyster industry and they didn't do that.
That's what I meant by the court, y'all. That it did produce... It did produce oyster shells.
The courts showed that there was oyster shells at seven to eight feet all across the property, which means that it was artificially... You wouldn't expect to see that much of oyster shells unless it was artificially placed there.
That was almost... If they win that case, that would be almost confiscation without...
I agree. And this case is different than the other two. This case is exactly like the IP case that they lost. And so, to be honest with you, I'm still a little bit mystified that they didn't try to resolve the case other than us just capitulate to their position. But in any event, I feel very confident that we're gonna prevail on that case. Now they're gonna take it up on appeal and...
Waste of money.
So maybe a couple of years.
Take more for this.
Okay. Rebecca, yeah?
Yes. This is amateur. I didn't edit it, so... So here we are at Children's Methodist Home. And it is a beautiful, large campus.
It's Honeywood's?
Yes.
Is that true?
Yes. We're taking a tour. This is their new PAC Center. And the PAC is what we're talking about here. Hominyment C. Assessment. And he's taking me around the big circle. How many acres is this campus to home?
One hundred and eighty-five.
Honeywood's.
The Children's Methodist Home started a hundred and twenty-five years ago, but they've been on this campus since two thousand and ten. What is this building over here?
This is our junior basketball indoor basketball court. If you look over there, there's a full Olympic swim... You know, full CrossFit. Uh, everything is here, so kids can work out, play ball, they can do staff and kid interactions, all that stuff. Our postman comes every single day. Doing good, sir.
And they have the gate entrance. Now, I see Magnolia Building. Is this a separate services? Is this one of your contractors?
No, Magnolia is services. We are also a community mental health center. So all of the therapeutic treatment services for our kids, our therapist and social workers are housed in there. And we also provide mental health services for the community at large.
Who pays for it?
So it's just another part of our program.
That's part of their program.
All right.
You know, as a part of the master plan that we just created, we're gonna re-outfit this whole outdoor basketball area. Hopefully, those funds will come in this year. We'll have the soft, you know, turfed on the ground and all that.
Some asphalt. You can get roads to it.
The building area and all of that.
And Robbie, just for time, let's go to the next video. This is just a big circle around. They have a chapel. They have separate homes where the girls live, the boys live.
Where is this?
It's in Jackson.
I'm forty-nine, Marlon. We pass it all the time. It says Piney Woods.
Oh, is that the...
No, I mean, I don't think it's Piney Woods. I don't know what that is.
Oh, I asked you if it's Piney Woods in Houston.
No, those are pine... Those are woods.
No, no.
I'm sorry. But it's got all these different...
We need to write this down.
They have a chapel. I thought you said it was Piney Woods. I'm like, "Yeah, they're Piney Woods." No, can you write it up? You can go to the next one.
Studio apartments are better than...
Oh, wait, let it go. Okay, I'll mark points.
By a million fold.
And so children can live here after their certain age?
Well, we find, you know, that when kids leave foster care, they're often without a lot of supports. So they'll call us because we became their family. And they'll say things like, "I'm homeless," et cetera. And so those apartments, man, they have... They're studio-sized apartments, but they are amazing. And so we'll help kids out, get on their feet. We'll help staff out who are having trouble and need some assistance. And they can live in there for a time being.
Yeah, you can go to the next.
It's a blessing all around.
So he just drives us around, shows all the different buildings.
Rebecca, what are the ages of the kids?
So it's... The average is about sixteen and most of them are females that have been sexually trafficked. This is one of the homes and she's in charge of it. I just want y'all to see what quality people they are. Side of them. Okay, so...
This is just an example of... The children. Each of the children have... I'm sorry.
Marlon, what, uh, Judge Bedcalf's husband wanted to do something?
They did?
They did that up in North...
They did do it? I didn't know that. I thought, well, they got too much trouble from the neighbors and they never...
No.
It never came to prison. What happened?
They started charging the funder. They didn't have any money? They did it for about eight months, twelve months?
Somebody's using it for something else now. I don't know.
It was for sale last time I checked. The building was empty.
They got out of it. They got out of it because they lost the funding.
It was something similar to this.
It was just like this. It was for eighteen, you know?
Yeah. So, I mean, that's... Oh, yeah, I'm familiar with that. Um, no.
He'd be good to talk to.
They were trying to keep them at least...
Well, see, they've been doing this for a hundred and twenty-five years. And they're viable. So I was just showing y'all this to show how serious and big and viable they are.
You know, they pop these kids are in school, so they get a bit more and have to be at school by eight o'clock. They need to make their bed.
Yeah.
The children come and watch television. And, uh, here's the dining table where we try to... Some of the kids are here and need us a family. And, um, so, uh, we have a couple of kids that are staying home today due to being sick of the under weather and that sort of thing.
And...
And we just got back, just came back from counseling, so they get a lot of counseling. A lot of them have their track backgrounds. They do, yes. We have, um, a facility where they do their laundry and what you're going to do.
You can go there, Robbie.
Yes. You know, you're just...
Yeah, they do their laundry. They go... They also have therapy, you know, for trauma and all the different...
Okay. This here is our development office. So a part of our master plan, this is where the, if you want, where all the action happens behind the scenes with donations. All right? Donations, taking care of our donors. We have our development director, communications coordinator, and our donor relations specialist. And so what we want to do is to, as part of our master plan, is to build a new building up at the front of the campus. Because right now, you have to breach the interior of the campus, which compromises the safety of the kids and families, to just come and donate and talk to about it. So it works right now, but our future goal is to have them move up, up top.
Great. What is there, besides... Oh, wow. What, besides...[1489.61]
What besides Methodist?
I've got the statues. Real geese.
That's my front yard. It's nasty.
They will be all around here. Deer, fox, everything. It's one of the last pieces of land in the inner city of Jackson. It's, it's a prized location that most people don't know about.
How amazing.
Our pastor, our campus pastor, and our campus life coordinator, he does both. Uh, he's a Methodist minister and he and his wife and children are like... We, this is way too gross homes. We're about to get it painted and taken care of. All the interiors look pretty much the same. But we're, we want to give everything a facelift to make sure it looks as homie as possible.
Less institutional, more homie, amen. Go to the next one. I want to...
You know what I found over the last eighteen years of doing this, build a home feels like an institution?
Perfect. Okay.
Hello.
Hi.
Welcome to PAC, we're the A's.
So this, this is, this is, uh, Selena Funches, Courtney Funches. Selena is what we call the leader of PAC.
Oh, the leader. The alpha dog.
She is over this program, super, um, amazing heart. And she is exactly what the PAC team, before we got up here, destined to be here.
Yes, please. I'm videoing for my fellow supervisors.
We've been there a part, so she did her temperature. Well, actually, there did a temperature check. The only thing you can't do is shoot.
Kudos, yes.
So this is our crowd scanning area. It's like a car, whenever they get downtime. So this is their area, this is the TV area.
Nice. Do any children live here or this is just where they come for assessment?
I mean, they live here. They actually live here. This is the TV area. They have a TV schedule there. Isn't there any TV over here?
It's not Thursday, it's Monday. So we work as well.
They need to think how they're gonna use their data. So, um, if they get a holiday, then we have to kind of...
Do you understand what she's saying? They have to earn their... Don't we get any of these children, so I'm gonna... So tell me where, where does it, where does it begin? Where, when they come, when they first come here, this is where it begins, okay?
Yes, ma'am. This is where they come in, um, to do their intake. We have the nurses that are here to do their assessments. They, um, give them a quick rundown on the body inventory. Um, they take in the meds. We create what we call a MAR.
What is the MAR?
The MAR is the medication administration log that we use. Um, it gives us the times that the kids have the meds, the type of media, um, and the prescribing position.
And you get their history of the different traumas and their whole history of placements and all the mini homes and tools they've been in.
We actually get that, we try to get that before they get here. So they, you know, the nurses will all remember what they need to do. Um, they do the suicide assessments, pain assessments, um... I don't see any assessment you can think of. It starts right here. Uh, we have a nurse practitioner who comes in every Monday. They have a new psychopath every week, so every Monday they have one. If we get a new admit, just say if it's on a Friday.
So anyway, y'all get the picture and that is what Beverly and I have been talking at Children, Methodist Children's Homes about. Uh, we've saved almost a million dollars by, uh, temporary closing our shelter because, as we know, it was not being used for its original purpose. So I am hoping that Devon said all we have to do now, they're very interested, the board, Dr. Janet, they've already said yes to come to the Gulf Coast. And we've got the building, we've got everything completely turnkey. And, uh, we have saved, like I said, almost a million dollars and this would take eight hundred and fifty thousand to make it, to have a Methodist Children's Home Gulf Coast. Or Harrison County, whatever y'all like.
I hear.
I, I think just the original to get it open and then he thinks it would be about seven hundred thousand a year, which is exactly what we were doing. And this is permanency, like these kids can live here till they're ready to go to J D or till they're ready to whatever.
Did we re-divert? And I'm just asking.
Yeah, I don't think so.
So, you have me and we were spending for the children's shelter.
Six hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, but did, that's still in their budget, is it not?
It was a sep, that was on just for the shelter workers.
We just got that cut from the hospital.
So it was separated?
Yeah, it was two separate budgets. The shelter workers were paid up. That was, I have to go back and look.
Yeah. How many people did we pay when we had the shelter open?
For all the shelter workers?
Yeah.
Oh, gosh.
It was a bunch, wasn't it?
Yeah, because we had, we had, we were open seven days a week, twenty-five hours a day. Yeah, that was the salaries, the feeding, the, you know, it was to run the utilities and everything.
Just a side note, Rebecca, if you're aware of this, I think the legislature just passed, passed legislation that those kids like that, that finished school, get free college tuition.
No, I didn't know that.
Yeah, that's cool.
That's amazing.
I think they're paying, that, that, if they meet that criteria, I think something like what they, the type of people or...
Yeah, that's exactly what they need. That's correct.
If they finish high school, they get free, uh, the state will pay for their college tuition.
That's wonderful.
Junior college and senior college.
Wow. Oh, that's amazing. It used to be when they turned eighteen on your birthday, they'd give you a hundred dollars and say, "Good luck." And they end up, you know, in a hospital dorms.
As a matter of fact, that the legislation was named after a legislator that had those types of services.
Oh, for himself, herself?
Named after him and he's in the legislature.
Yeah, we let them go.
So what is our next? What is our next step? Should we authorize, Mr. Holland, are they ready?
They said they're ready. Their PAC Center just opened in November to February, so they said they apologize for the delay. It took a little longer. But they just need to figure out the fiduciary and he said eight fifty would be what they needed to get.
How many, how many people, uh, clients will that building serve?
I think we could, uh, between ten and fifteen.
Depends on if they're girl.
Yeah. And some are temporary. Some might only be a few months.
You have some separation.
Oh, yeah. They have like a male person with the boys and then they have a female.
But I'm talking about that facility because that, that, that what we have is a bedroom or all.
But we have big rooms.
This one was wide when I was back. So maybe the next step, Tim, maybe you speak to their person?
Their attorney.
Your people, Dr. Arp.
Did they, did they have like, did their rooms have like four, five or six people in the room?
Yeah, and Devon came in, uh, with their vice president. They came in toward the shelter. Beverly were there and they said it'd be perfect.
But I can't remember. I thought he said they'd have to separate the girls and...
Well, we had a man.
Somehow. Something, but I don't remember what.
That's how ours did because we had girls.
Are we just talking to the shelter house or we're gonna do that whole?
Just to the shelter house because...
It would just be the shelter house.
That would be now, that probably max him out on workers.
So they wouldn't have a need for any of the trailers that are there?
No.
I don't think so.
No, you think it, I wouldn't.
Watching the film, they, they had their sort of medical treatment. Will they have facilities for that? Where, where will they?
They're gonna be exactly like that. Like in the front, when you come in, that would be the assessment, where it used to be the old garage, where they've got baby clothes now. They can make that the assessment and have a full-time nurse practitioner. They also have a psychiatrist once a week, um, and suicide check.
If they're comfortable with it, aren't you? It's been, they looked at it. This has been too long.
I know, it's been closed up. It's perfectly clean and the kitchen's great. And the playground is hope.
Could you make it a girl lonely if you have to because of the...
Oh, we could ask.
Why don't we ask Devon and have to?
We have a lot of, they're, they're the most vulnerable right now.
Yeah.
Especially with this trafficking. I know men are trafficking, boys are trafficking too, but...
That's right now.
I know. I'm, I'm not trying to be sexist.
So they wouldn't have a problem limiting the children from Harrison County?
I think they'd be fine with that.
That was my, that was the one thing I asked him was, could we just keep it wrongly Harrison County since we'd be the ones fighting?
Right.
I think they asked us, are we, also is the youth court gonna have the ability to send people to the shelter?
I think...
Who gets, who decides where these kids come from, do you know?
That's another Devon question. It's a mix, you know, it's kind of a mix between a local court and law enforcement will call. Say this child has run away seventeen times from this lady's house. Will you let him come there?
Do they get any county or state funding for that facility?
I'm not sure of the answer.
We need to check. Tony said they got...
State funding.
I'm sure they get grants and stuff. Seems like you do. We might be the same to defer some of our costs if we're gonna have to pay.
For sure. And he explained something that they are a diversionary center too, so the state does allow them to take in the most serious. So, yeah, they do get state funding actually because it's under the mental health umbrella, I guess.
And they said they have their own mental health facility. That must be funded, I'm sure.
I don't know. That's all I know. I'm sorry.
Well, I think we need to look into it because get some of these questions answered.
So I'll give them your number two.
Yeah, we need to talk about it one day so we can figure out the interrelationship between... There are several statutes that apply, so we just need to talk about that so y'all are clear on what y'all... Two ways, there's two basic ways I think you could do about funding to... One, one has some limitations to it that we have to talk about.
Okay.
The other one involves the youth court.
Possesses a beat. These kids are like sixteen.
Yeah.
They're high school age.
Yeah.
But I, I do think it's doable.
Yeah.
Just how we get there.
Okay.
So, okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it. Thank y'all for your patience.
I don't have any.
Yes, sir. Okay. Nothing else? We're getting motion adjourned.
I should do a turn.
All in face of motion, say aye?
Aye.